Good evening, everyone. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this March 3 meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Joyner.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Andrea Bowen.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Hall.
Present.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the city council and me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Vernon Chu. Thank you, Lieutenant, for being with us. And our fire marshal tonight is Micah Bodford, who is here as well. Thank you for being there. Thank you. Let me recognize our city manager for his update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just several things tonight. First, let me start off with, I know several of you have asked for some clarification on issues that have been reported in the Journal about our Winston-Salem Fire Department. Just to reiterate that I have told to each of you, we have not cut any staff in the Fire Department. The Fire Department still has the same number of staff that they have typically had. In fact, as a reminder, Council, you added $2.4 million in overtime cost to the Fire Department budget this past year. That's in addition. We're getting some additional research on clarifying all this. But over the past five or six years, you've also added two safer grants, which are usually about 12 firefighters each. So there are about 24 firefighters just with those grants to the Fire Department staffing allocation as well. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about all of this, but there's also have been some misclarifications as to what it means by staffing versus minimum staffing. In order to manage operations within an adopted budget amount, which we, every department has to do in the city, the Fire Department did recently make some operational changes to reduce minimum staffing levels from 89 to 79 firefighters per shift. This is to adhere to the overtime budget that has been put in place for them, which again was $2.4 million higher than what they had previously. This does not mean that we limit our staffing to 79 firefighters. In fact, since the staffing changes were made, the department has averaged 85 firefighters per shift, been as high as 90, and hit the minimum of 79 once for half of one shift. Just to put that in perspective, if we are fully staffed and every firefighter is available for duty on that day, you would have 117 assigned folks to each shift. And out of that 117 is what we get our minimum staffings from. So reducing the minimum staffing means that staffing levels would only be down due to employee absences such as sick time, vacation, injury, or other approvals. In those cases, now when we get below 79, the Fire Department wouldn't call in employees to work overtime. Before, they had been calling in folks when they reduced below 89 on each shift. There's also been a fair number of references to the National Fire Protection Association or NFPA standards. The main standard that we look at is the recommendation of having 17 personnel that can respond to any initial alarm of a fire at a single-family home. So if there's a structure fire, we want to have at least 17 people respond to that call. We have 20 stations strategically located across the city, and the Fire Department has an average response time of just over six minutes, deploying more on-scene resources for house fires than the 17 recommended by the NFPA. The chief has reported that even at a minimum staffing level of 79, we would typically send 29 people to a house fire. We average about 300 house fires a year in the city, and so at each one of those, we are consistently providing more staff members than is required, or not required, but than is recommended by the NFPA to adequately address those house fires. As a part of our accreditation process, we adopted strict stringent response guidelines to ensure optimal staffing levels and the commitment of our highly-trained firefighters remain focused on delivering timely and effective services to the community we serve. There are two different ways to look at staffing per unit. We have 20 units scattered around the city, and you can provide three people at a minimum staffing to each of those pieces of apparatus spread all over the 20 units in the city, or we could reduce the number of locations where we were responding out of and have more people on each apparatus. For example, you could put four on the apparatus, and then you would have to reduce the number of stations you're responding from. That would put more people on the scene with one truck, but it probably would increase our response times because we would not have as many people spread out throughout the city. So I'm supportive of the chief's decision to make sure that we have adequate resources throughout the year. We've spent about 75% of our overtime budget to date, so we're not out of overtime money. But at the less spend rate that we were going at, we would have been out of money before the end of the year. So these strategic actions have been put in place to ensure that we can maintain that minimum level of staffing throughout the city throughout the rest of this fiscal year. I'm sure there'll be lots of additional discussion about this when we get into our budget timeframe this year, but wanted to make sure that you had those facts. On other items, or if I could pause to see these questions, but I'll finish up and then see if there are questions. Bulk item collection did begin today, and will run through September 5. So you can look on our app to see when your collection will be, but they'll be mailing, and they'll be mailing postcards to residents several weeks in advance of collections. So either go to your website or look for those cards. A reminder that bulk item collection is for single-family residents only. It is not for businesses. And there are things that you cannot put out there, so pay attention to what is allowed for bulk item pickup. Our Business Inclusion and Advancement will be kicking off its Small Business Plan Contest on March 11. Participants will learn how to create a business plan and then put it into action. Two winners will be selected to win a $5,000 grant to start their own business. You can contact Stephen Harrison in the Business Inclusion Department for additional information. The Business Inclusion and Advancement is also hosting a virtual meeting for MWBE businesses to learn about the city's 2025 capital projects that will go out for bid this year. The meeting will be on Tuesday, March 4 at 5:30 PM. And again, contact that office if you're interested in attending. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the Sustainability Department is promoting a no-mo-march campaign. I asked for a no-snow march campaign, but they couldn't do deliver that. So we're doing a no-mo-march campaign. So they're encouraging residents that have, that are maintaining their lawns properly to not mow in March to protect pollinators' habitats. So as springtime begins, birds and insects will have an abundance of food sources. This is not to let people, let your yard grow wild, or if you haven't done anything with it, that you still need to maintain your yard, but this provides a little bit of extra time in the spring for those pollinators. DOT is going to be holding a public input drop-in meeting on the Long Ranch Trail Extension Project on Wednesday, March 5 from 5 to 7. That will be at the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center on Pittsburgh Avenue. Again, check the website for additional information on that. And then one final recognition. Tom Careka was nationally recognized as the GovCIO Outlooks, one of the top 10 city government CIOs in 2024. He was noted for being a seasoned CIO, has been serving the city of Winston-Salem for over two decades. He is renowned for his exceptional integration capabilities, disaster recovery skills, and master over Microsoft SQL Server. And as you all know, he was leading the IS team that has done a tremendous job over the last several months of getting our systems back up after the cyber event that we had. So we're truly appreciative of having Tom as a part of our team and his entire staff and all they've been doing for the city. So with that, I'll stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pay. Any questions, the city manager? Thank you, and thank you for clarifying the issue with the fire staffing. I think that's very helpful to understand that the minimum at a structure fire would be 17, but we are typically sending 29 to a structure fire.
That's good, sir.
All right, thank you. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. And as always, the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed will be enacted with one motion. We're televised in this meeting live tonight on the city's YouTube page, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 AM and again Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. Of course, copies of our agenda are always available to the members of the public by just going to our website and click on the "Watch Meetings" online link. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda? What's that, C4?
Yeah.
Is there a motion on the balance?
I move for approval of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
They're second? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No, and that's unanimous. We now go to item C4.
Item C4, resolution awarding contract for parking lot resurfacing at 14 city parks.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Royston. Might even be Mr. Ral. I meant to ask this earlier. I've been pretty busy, and I just noticed it again when I reread the agenda. We're doing 14 parks or parking lots. Are these priority parking lots, or are the parking lots in the parks in a rotation mode, whereas you'll do this 14, and then you'll move on to some others, much like we do our streets and sidewalks?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem Adams, members of city council. The parking lots that are on the initial list are the ones that are in the worst condition. We also identified parks that have internal circulation problems. So we've been working to improve the infrastructure and the curb appeal for our parks, and so we'll continue to go through this list very similarly how we did playgrounds to remediate the parking lots as needed.
How many park, excuse me, how many, I made a cough drop. How many parking lots do we have? Do you know? For the parks, how many are we talking about? Every park? Or is there a list, again, like streets for rehab?
We do have a list internally. I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, but I can get that number to you. But we did identify the parking lots that were in the, that needed the most help, dealing with potholes, egress-ingress issues. So we prioritize them based on that, as well as safety and accessibility. So we use those determining factors to decide which ones to move on first, second, third. So we feel very comfortable with this, but it's long overdue, and we're happy that we're able to get this far to get them done.
Thank you, and I look forward, I'm sure, to the council as to the list of the next lineup, whether it's next year or whatever, because I noticed I didn't have any. Yep, it's that kind of deal. North Ward didn't have any, which is a good thing, I guess, but I didn't see any. But thank you so much. I move for approval of consent, C4 item.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All those who vote the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No?
Ooh.
That is unanimous. Are we voting electronically tonight?
We were going to try it, but it's okay.
It's okay.
We got you.
All right, we'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised basically of three updates for us regarding the Smart Start of Forsyth County pre-K initiatives, the National League of Cities congressional visit, and the Triad Housing Summit that we held last week, dealing with affordable housing, our affordable housing process that is, I am going to give us an update. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, update on Smart Start at Forsyth County pre-K initiatives.
Recognize the city manager, Ral, is going to tee this one up, and then Dr. Finney is going to come up.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem, Mayor Adams, members of council. Back in January of 2023, the mayor and council authorized a contribution of $350,000 in city ARPA funds to Smart Start Forsyth County for pre-K initiatives, mainly coming out of the recommendations of the pre-K priority. Last fall, the city provided the second contribution of $175,000 for the pre-K initiative. So tonight, I'd like to recognize Dr. Lewis Finney, President/CEO of Smart Start Forsyth County, and Dr. Tatia Prieto, who's President of Prismatic Services Inc., to provide an update on the pre-K initiatives.
Dr. Finney, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and city council. Dr. Finney, again, President/CEO of Smart Start Forsyth County. Just going to be briefly, just what's on the agenda. We're going to talk about the impact to the community, but also the total contribution from the county and the city collectively. You got to excuse me, I'm coming up with something myself.
It's in the air.
As mentioned earlier, some of this support comes back to 2014 from KBR Reynolds Trust, where they invested in this community funds towards a pre-K priority that consisted of multiple elected officials, advocates, and childcare providers who came together to really look at what the pre-K landscapes look like in Forsyth County with some Salem. And what we came up with was a cohort, thank you for the water, of classes throughout the county and the city. These are some of our partners. Our Hispanic League was a partner with ours, Childcare Resources and Referral, the public schools, our family services, Prismatic, our Smart Start and Forsyth Futures. All did this collectively together. Just to give you just some overview, one of five families have access to affordable childcare. And our families spend average about 25% to 30% of their income. Our Winston-Salem data is a little different, particularly in certain pockets and certain wards, where there's actually less childcare in those particular communities. Some of the projects that we're doing this year is really to pivot in those specific communities where we see childcare deserts, where we don't see any type of private childcare at all, but we see a need. This will give you some background of our organization, which some of y'all may be familiar with. And this is one of the reasons why Smart Start was chosen as the people to administer this. We have access to 90 licensed childcare centers, which is about roughly about 93% of everybody that's licensed in the whole county. But also, we touch everyone either through funds, either through childcare or through training, and we serve approximately anywhere between 13,000 and 16,000 children and families throughout the county every single day. And more importantly, the current partners we actually already have contracts with. The other advantage of working with us is because we already currently have contracts with the private childcare. So it's a lot easier for us to fund these particular private childcare providers. Then I want to introduce Dr. Prieto. She's our external evaluator. What we wanted to do to make sure we had a true vision of how this program actually looked was get someone on the outside who has no relation to the city or county, to do a true evaluation on the first year, but also be able to testify as to why, if you continue this, or when we get additional funds, or if we do to support this, you'll see different type of outcomes. And I'm going to leave it to her at this point.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Tasha Prieto, President of Prismatic Services. We have served as the evaluator of this initiative since the beginning of it. First, I'd like to review our planned path or logic model towards achieving the ultimate outcome of high-quality, universal pre-K and the attendant-improved child outcomes. To get to that ultimate outcome, this initiative launched multiple strategies to support teachers and families. Expected outputs and outcomes were defined at the beginning of the project so that all partners could understand their roles in supporting success. As Prismatic began working with Smart Start, we determined that all the pieces were in place for potential success. This was as part of our normal formative evaluation process. However, the body of research and program implementation, particularly the implementation of new programs in the educational arena, tells us that it is frequently difficult to see immediate positive outcomes. The desire to assess progress the minute after we launch something is normal, and we see that frequently. However, as articulated by leaders in the field, including Fulon, an implementation dip should be expected as change is introduced. When we are asking staff and systems to learn to do something new and then to do something new, sometimes performance during that time period may actually be below what it was before. How long does it take before we should expect to see substantial improvements in an educational program? The research would tell us three to five years. And there are also frequently challenges in implementing new initiatives. The Smart Start initiative did have challenges. In the first year, program staff struggled with implementing new ways of work. There were delays in collecting various types of data. Trainings had to be provided on how to administer and then use new assessment tools. Then time had to be found to assess each student. These things are also typical. Anytime we try something new, I'd be very surprised if there are not implementation challenges in the beginning. Moving from '23-'24 into year two, Prismatic and Smart Start took a look at how year one had challenges and how to address those. A number of changes were rolled out in the summer in between the years, including providing more opportunities for teacher professional development and developing improved data collection methods. So even though it's a bit early to assess whether we have achieved our ultimate outcomes of high-quality, universal pre-K and improved child outcomes, we can't talk about whether we are making progress towards that goal. Here's a look at where we are in one of those arenas. Teacher retention in '23-'24 is in the middle block of columns there, and you can see that in that year, we had four teachers who resigned. Our teacher retention rate was not better than those in non-ARPA classrooms within the county, but it wasn't that far off. We lost the same number of teachers as the other centers did. Midway through year two, as of December of 2024, our teacher retention rate was 100%. So it looks like we're on track to improve teacher retention overall. Another promising sign in this area came from multiple data points in our teacher survey. The teachers in the initiative value the supports that Smart Start is providing them. Here are the myriad other outputs we expected to see from this initiative, ranging from salary equity to coaching to family engagement and to equity focus. The third column provides the outputs as of the end of school year '23-'24, so a full year, whereas the last column provides outputs as of December 2024, halfway through year two. In year one and thus far in year two, 100% of the teachers eligible for salary retention and tuition supports received them. In both periods, a great deal of coaching was provided. The same was true of professional development. You can see that professional development in year two is on track to exceed that of year one. The outputs for family engagement and supports were robust in year one and on track to be the same in year two. These outputs on the previous slide led us to these outcomes. I've already mentioned where we are as far as teacher retention. In terms of high-quality classrooms, in year one, 40% of our classrooms averaged high scores on the class, and all generally did well in the Eckers assessments. These are nationally-known assessments for quality of classrooms, early childhood classrooms. Where things were not already awesome, Smart Start and the coach has got to work helping those classrooms to improve. We won't see the results of those efforts until the end of year two, but we do expect to see improvements. Both our measurement of family engagement and the amount of family engagement has improved from year one to year two. Important groundwork around equity was laid in year one. Building on that groundwork has continued into year two, but we won't see specifics to report on until the end of year two. And finally, child outcomes. In year one, we served 353 students. Classroom attendance was high. At the end of year one, 39% of students were at or above average in literacy skills. 65% were at or above average in math skills. As detailed in our written mid-year report, a number of the details in the child, in year one child outcomes, were actually better than the outcomes in the non-ARPA classrooms within Forsyth County. Midway through year two, please don't let the 21% and 38% on the slide fool you. Children do not learn in a standard, linear, upward fashion throughout the year. Their learning is typically quantized. They will struggle, 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 then suddenly they get it, and they go five paces ahead of where they were. Those numbers don't feel worrisome at all to us at this point, but I wanted to show you that we are doing measurements. In conclusion, Prismatic finds that mid-year through year two, Smart Start is on track to equal or exceed its year one outputs and outcomes.
Thank you. You all have any questions so far?
Dr. Finney, I saw that last slide, the number of participants went from 352 to 250. What was the big drop-off there?
The difference is the fact that the mid-year is only halfway through the year. Mid-year last year, we were at 286 as of the end of December, so we're not too far off. Unlike K-12, students can join or not join an early childhood classroom all year long, and a lot of it depends on family circumstance as opposed to, you know, like a mandated K-12.
Thank you. Other questions from? Dr. Finney?
Thank you for the question.
Councilmember Cipio.
Just a clarification question on the data. ARPA classrooms versus non-ARPA classrooms? Is that like a control measure versus a test measure being the ARPA, meaning that in ARPA, there was more dollars given to those teachers?
It is a quasi-experimental design framework. The ARPA classrooms are the ones the funds went to. The non-ARPA classrooms were any other classrooms within Forsyth County that we could use as a comparison group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Finney.
Thank you for the questions. I think I'm going to talk briefly about the economic impact investment. Okay, I'm sorry. Just to give you just some overview of the economic impact and investment, a pre-K. We also work very closely with the Chamber, the one here, but also the state. And our state is unique, where we actually have a childcare unit from the part of the Chamber of Commerce for the state that actually looks and assess childcare impacts to workforce. And you see from there, it's anywhere from $3.2 to $7.1 billion is the impact in 2023. And some of this you all probably may be aware of about the return of investment and investing in pre-K as well, which is why we continue to work with other partners, with the county, the city, and the state, to invest specifically in pre-K. And just some feedback from a teacher, but also a parent, because part of what we did to get some anecdotal data was also do surveys with multiple parents, but also some of the staff, to get some of that feedback that was not part of the actual measurements. So we're very proud that many of the teachers that you saw, the 100%, from a nation perspective and even here locally, normally the turnover rate is about 82% to 72%, particularly around retention. So to see it at 100% is better than even under industries of work outside of just teaching and childcare. So really very proud of the workforce element of this project, and we're glad we shared that with you as well. And these are just some goals and data that we're working on. Not particular state as it relates to NC pre-K specifically. The state has a goal that 70% of all counties are required The state has a goal that 70% of all counties are required to be at, receive NC pre-K dollars and funded slots. In our particular community right now, we're at 27%. So we're well below what the state mandate is by that time. And that's based off of quality of private childcare centers, and that also impacts the amount of money that we can draw down from the state. So currently across the state, the counties are about 30%, meaning 30% of the counties are currently at 70%. So you see we have a long way to go. That's why we continue to look for opportunities to get funds to really try to improve private childcare centers. And some of that work you've all done in the past couple of years when you've invested in some of our family childcare work. And some of the things we're also doing, just trying to expand some of our strategies and looking for some cost-sharing models. We're exploring things with private industry, with foundations, our city and the county as well. And really important about investing to the future, and I want to leave you all with a big event that we're having March 6th this week that's sponsored by Hal Kaplan, the founder and owner of Kaplan Industries, but also the Greater Winston-Salem and the Pre-K Priority. We're going to do a business focus, and this is going to be moderated by executives and HR from Fortune 500 companies, who are going to really talk to business leaders across the community about the money that's being lost in Forsyth County because of the workforce loss and shortages with childcare. And this is something that's open to the public that we hope that you all can attend, get some information from business leaders who are here in Forsyth County, but also the Greater Winston-Salem Chamber of Commerce and Kaplan, who's headquartered here out of Winston-Salem, to talk about some of their impacts in childcare. And that finally concludes my report. Subject to any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Any questions, Dr. Finney? Mayor Protim?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Finney.
Thank you.
Back in 2014, I was part of that cohort that the Kate B. Reynolds put together to look at a deeper dive of why we had to invest in pre-K in Forsyth County. As we are seeing with the world changing, if we're not willing to invest in the future, which are the children, and it goes all the way back from cradle to adulthood, then they're never going to be prepared for whatever workforce development or any other trainings that may be in place for them to be able to take advantage of. My concern is that I know that the ARPA funding was a one-time initiative. And I guess I'm wondering, and I can see that you clearly have a plan as to how you plan to raise these other funds to bridge the gap. What happens if you aren't able to get or receive the resources of funding that you have used the past first year and second year for what's next?
Well, I think probably the biggest challenge, and because of Smart Start, we also focus on the workforce aspect. What we mean by that is, one, is the teachers and the private childcare centers who are closing, but also what we're finding is that we're constantly getting calls from businesses. We're calling to look for childcare, and part of the issue sometimes with coming here and even people wanting to move here is lack of affordable childcare. So that's why we're trying that approach a lot and working closely with the Greater Winston-Salem, but also the private industry right now, to get them to do some things to just cost-sharing models that the state has adopted as well, which is just not in our community, but we're actually trying to start this program here. And Greater Winston-Salem has tried that. And that's a process where you have the employee pays a percentage, you have the business pay a percentage, and Smart Start would pay a percentage of those funds. And that's where the additional funds that come through. The second thing that we're doing right now and pivoting to is focusing on those providers, but also the faith-based providers who aren't able to get funds because they're not at the three, four, and five quality rating system. So we're also working and seeking funds to help support the private childcare industry who's not at that particular area, because that would allow them to be able to draw down federal dollars from the county, but also from Smart Start for subsidy programs as well. So what we're doing, we don't expect to do this same type of cohort. We want to focus more on fixing some of the major industry issue, because this here costs about almost $4 million investment between that one time. But this gave us a real good opportunity to look at that cohort and see how focusing on assessment tools, retaining teachers also impacts the school readiness of those children. We're also working very closely with the public schools and making sure that we're aligned with them when these kids transition into school, but also as they apply for funds and we apply for funds together, we make sure that there's a marriage, because our philosophy is that we have just as much responsibility as a public schools to make sure that these kids' reading level in third grade is successful. And we work with organizations like Family Services and Print Cares, who do a lot of pre-K work, to make sure we're all seeing and aligning the same way. And we have some events that are coming up as well, because we also work very closely with our local legislative delegation, whether it be requesting funds, having to be a part of our organization and supportive, but also partnering with the city and county government, because we do feel that this is not just the job of Smart Start, but it's the job of the entire community. And we're really blessed to really have a good community like this that invests in early care and education. I think equally blessed to have a business group like the Greater Winston-Salem and other companies, who really see how important it is because it's impacting their employees. Did I answer your question?
Yes. One more thing. When I was part of the cohort, the one thing that I think just shocked all of us was when we found out, they presented, just like you, the data that the 70% goal and that we were only at 27%, but as you said, the money is out there, some funding or resources. And could you just touch on that a moment to explain again why we aren't being able to access those funds?
Well, part of it, this process should start about 20 something years ago. We're really just starting the process the past four to five years to, one, ask for additional dollars from the state, but also to diversify our funds, getting local funds, but also getting foundation dollars. This is actually the first time that Smart Start has received county and city funds these past four or five years. Most of those jurisdictions that are at that level right now have a partnership, but they've also started that process about 20 years. Each year, what should happen with a Smart Start is that they should assess the community and determine whether you need five more slots, 10 more slots, and then make that request. So if you started that, say, back in 1994, 95, and 96, we would be at that level of where we're at. But also it brings better credibility when you go into legislatures across the state, when you go into Department of Health and Human Services and the city and county. The first thing they're going to ask is the question that you asked. So fortunately, we're at that point, we're doing, just doing a lot of catch-up, and we see a lot of success in that catch-up, but we still have a way to go. I do think that we can get to that 70%, but that's going to take not just the effort of Smart Start in the school system, it's going to take the effort of the city and the county, but also the business sector, but also the childcare. And because of just different things that are going on across the country, there are a lot of unforeseen circumstances as well that we're also trying to prepare ourselves for too.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Mayor Joins. Dr. Finney, can you speak to if you were able to find out in your research and doing work about the staffing and any sort of concerns that staff may have had with receiving benefits for them to stay in positions? Or if you've seen anything where benefits were not offered? For example, I know Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, obviously, they have an entire package. And I know other, you know, childcare providers, but then also other places that offer pre-K may or may not have that. Has that come up in any?
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the biggest things that are different when it relates to the childcare industry. Family services and the public schools gets benefits. In the private childcare industry, I would probably say about 90% do not. Their primary benefit is normally the basic things such as workers' comp, but that's about it. But as far as PTO, holidays, health benefits, and so forth, they don't get benefits, but also the other issues, that their salaries are anywhere between $11 and $13. That's why what we do in Forsyth County, Smart Start has a program called Wages, so we actually supplement salaries as well. In addition to this program, we use some of our state dollars that only goes towards the private industry towards supplementing their salaries. And we work with about 81 providers, actually 81 centers that are licensed, that we actually supplement their salaries, but it's still nowhere near where it needs to be at. And this project here did a pay parity, but also did retention bonuses. So the other thing that we're looking at that we found is that, particularly when we saw the 100%, is that any type of funds that we're looking for has to be something that's going to go directly to teachers to do something either for benefits, but also for salaries, because people for a long time have always said that teachers just love children, but they also love their families too.
That's right.
Which means that they have to put their families first, and many of them are leaving their jobs because they cannot continue to work, and it's an aging outpopulation. Most of the teachers are an average age of about 45 years old to 70. We don't have a lot of people graduating college that's saying, I want to be a teacher. Part of that's because of the salary rate. And what happens a lot of times is that we'll have a degree teacher in the private childcare industry who's making $15 an hour, she'll just go work for the public schools, and she can make about $42,000 a year. So that's where that transition comes. A part of what our role in this Smart Start is, we work with some of the leaders, try to help with some of that retention and have them do a lot of training and things together, but also we focus on supplementing only the private childcare because of your point, the city council, and there's a lack of benefits and a lack of pay. And it's 99% women-owned businesses. So these are all business owners that are 99%. So it's actually the largest minority women-owned business that we have in our county as well. It's that particular business.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item G2.
Item G2, update on National League of Cities congressional visit.
Assistant City Manager Lanier is going to tee this one up for us.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protim Adams, and members of the city council. Kyle Leonard, he's our lobbyist. He was, he's a government affairs advisor with Strategics Consulting Incorporated. Tonight, he's going to deliver a presentation to give you kind of a forecast of our travel to the National League of Cities, the council's travel to the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. He'll also provide us with a brief federal update. Kyle, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Angel. Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Protim, members of the council, a good evening. First, I want to give Leslie's regrets for not being here today. She's on the Capitol with the counties. The National Association of Counties Conference is this week. Of course, National League of Cities is next week. So a pleasure to be here this evening with you all. First, want to give an update on the agenda for the National League Congressional Visit, which is scheduled for March 9th through the 12th of this month. There is a full slate of conference receptions, speeches, sessions that are hosted by the National League of Cities. Those are separate from what we do at Strategics. We put together a Hill Advocacy Day, so that's what I'm going to walk you through all today. Of course, your peers throughout the country and throughout the state are very active in that NLC organization, as are members of this council. So valuable portions, both associated with the main congressional cities, NLC Conference, and as well as our Advocacy Day that occurs simultaneously. So we'll give a quick overview of what our agenda is for March 11th, which is the day that we'll be meeting with folks on Capitol Hill, starting with the North Carolina Governor's Washington Office. This is Governor Stein's lobbyist in Washington, DC. The current director of the North Carolina Washington Office is Jim McCleskey. He's now in his fourth term, fourth different governor, serving in that position, both Republicans and Democrats. And of course, you all know Jim is a huge supporter of the city of Winston-Salem, so great that we'll be kicking off our day with Jim in the governor's office at 9:00 AM, proceeding to the Senate Office Buildings at 10:30 with meetings from Senator Tillis' staff at 10:30. And then we also have meetings with both of the US senators, Senator Ted Budd and Tom Tillis, in a group meeting setting in a committee room from 11:00 to 12:00 that day. We'll grab some lunch before we make our way across Capitol Hill to meet with new members of your congressional delegation. Of course, following redistricting and the recent 2024 elections, you have two new members of the US House of Representatives. You have US Congressman Pat Harrigan from the 10th Congressional District, who we'll be meeting with at 3:00. And then US Representative Addison McDowell from the 6th Congressional District, who we meet with at 2:30. We also will be going to North Carolina League of Municipalities reception at 5:00 PM that afternoon. So just a quick overview of the schedule. I'll pause there if there's any questions and then get into the purpose of what these meetings are and go over some of the talking points. Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. As you all know, for many years, it's very important to maintain the local-federal collaboration and partnership. The city of Winston-Salem has been successful in pursuing and winning a number of federal grants, as well as continuing to build relationships with federal agencies. And one of the reasons that success has happened is by continuing to maintain and bolster those relationships in the Capitol. So one of the primary objectives of our trip each year is to present your members of Congress with the new federal action plan. I was here just last month when this council unanimously approved the 2025 federal action plan, and so we'll look forward to presenting that to our members of Congress, highlighting both historically some of the areas and issues that are important to the city across affordable housing and homelessness, community economic and workforce development, public infrastructure, public safety, quality of life, and others. So very important time for us to be presenting that document to your members. We will also be providing them an update on both our recent and forthcoming grant applications. I think you all have heard a lot going on in the news and in the federal space regarding federal funding and potential federal funding pauses related to grants. And so the city was awarded five grants or six grants in the year 2024, two of which are still under pending agreements that don't have signed contracts. And so we want to make sure we bring those to the attention of our members of Congress. One is the Department of Transportation's Low No Bus Grant Award, $4.5 million. And then another, also under DOT, for the Safe Streets Planning Grant. We will highlight to your members of Congress that we intend to pursue whatever funding opportunities are available. Right now, we know there's a pause on new funding opportunities from most agencies. We expect that to lift, particularly as Congress goes through the annual appropriations process. They currently have a continuing resolution that expires for FY25 appropriations on March 14th. It's in the news, potential government shutdown. What we heard just last week is the president endorsing a year-long continuing resolution kind of to push FY26 all the way to September. And as we've discussed, they'll quickly move into setting dollars and top-line funding levels for FY26 appropriations. So we want to reiterate to our members that you all and your staff, most importantly, are very active in examining funding opportunities that are presented to them and when there's the right fit to pursue them. And so we'll make sure we reinforce that message for the members of councils that are visiting. I think that covers the talking points. One additional item is we're going to be making a request to our new House members and our senators to come here to Winston-Salem in person, to continue to support each other and to build that relationship, particularly for those two new members, Congressman Harrigan and Congressman McDowell.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions with Kyle? Be a busy day on the 11th, so.
All members, put your walking shoes on. Thank you very much, Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item G3.
Item G3, update on Triad Housing Summit and Affordable Housing Process.
Assistant City Manager Lanier, you're going to tee this one up as well?
It's all right. Samuel Hunter will provide us with an update of last week's housing, Triad Housing Summit and the Affordable Housing Process. I want to take this opportunity to thank Samuel for all his hard work. He worked very diligently with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council to put this event on. Samuel?
Yeah. Let me add to that, Sam. It's a great, a great meeting. Thank you for your hard work making that happen.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protim, members of the city council. Samuel Hunter, Assistant Neighborhood Services Director. Last Thursday, we had the Piedmont Triad Regional Housing Summit at the Benton Convention Center. We had roughly 260 to 280 people in attendance to hear our lineup. Here's the agenda for last week. We had the keynote speaker, Patrick Bowen from Bowen National Research. He conducted a housing assessment for the Carolina Core, which included the Piedmont Triad region. He shared some eye-opening statistics about Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, numbers about the vacancy rates and rental units and owner-occupied units. And then he also shared some information about how we can increase the affordable housing stock here in Forsyth County. After him, we had Tyler Mulligan from the University of North Carolina School of Government. He is a dynamic speaker. We are very thankful to get him here in Winston-Salem to share his information with the community. He specifically defined affordable housing because people will always have that question. They often get public housing and affordable housing misconstrued. So he was able to share a definitive answer on what affordable housing was. He talked about the different strategies to increase the affordable housing stock, really promoted the low-income housing tax credit program, and then also utilizing the city-owned land that municipalities have at their disposal. Two of those things are processes and procedures that we are currently implementing, so we could say that we are ahead of the game. It made me feel good when he was sharing that information, that that is something that you all already advocate for and promote and that staff is already implementing right now. In the later half of the day, we had panel sets. In the later half of the day, we had panel sessions, some that included local elected officials. Mayor Protim Adams was on that panel with Representative Jess Zinger, which was a great informative panel. And then we had cross-sector collaboration panels, and then we have representatives from the Federal Reserve there speaking about some resources that they offer. So we were very thankful to host that at the Benton. PTRC was a great partner for that event. We're so thankful that they were able to provide that partnership with us. I'll take any questions about the housing summit.
Any questions about the summit?
I have.
Councilmember Siffio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Samuel, it was a really great summit. Thank you for all of your work. Mr. Bowman had such a detailed report. Do you have a link to his actual report, and could you send it to me?
Yes, ma'am, and I can share that with the entire council. We actually had him condense some of his information to be specific for Forsyth County and Winston-Salem, so I will share that with you as well.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, thank you, Samuel. And you're going to do the next part as well?
Yes. So this is just a very short and brief update about the affordable housing development process. As you all know, this is something that staff has been working on very diligently, and we are working towards bringing something to you very firm, very soon. So the process officially opened on December tenth, two thousand twenty-four, and closed on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. It closed at three o'clock p.m. Eastern Standard Time. I say Eastern Standard Time because we have people all across the nation that wanted to get in on this process. A total of fifty proposals were submitted in the inaugural cycle. Twenty-seven out of fifty proposals were deemed responsive and were eligible to proceed in the process. Just so you all know and the public knows, responsive means completing the entire application, providing everything that was critical for staff to do the analysis, to make sure that we could provide you all with the context you need to make an educated decision on what you fund. We did speak with people that did not move forward in the process. We provided them with some context on what they did wrong, what they need to do better, and that they are not, they are eligible to come back in the upcoming cycles as well. The Internal Review Committee has conducted their scoring review for each proposal, so they provided a quantitative score based off of that scoring matrix that you all saw in the previous council meetings. Those scores will be available to you all. And then also, the Affordable Housing Coalition conducted their qualitative review last Friday morning. That meeting lasted about four hours. It is on the city's YouTube page. I believe if you all ask any of the representatives from the Affordable Housing Coalition how they felt the process went, I think they would advocate that it was a very smooth process and that they were appreciative to help facilitate the process as well. Next steps, we will be coming to you on April fourteenth for the committee meeting and then also on May fifth for the final council meeting. And we may try to get in front of you all before April fourteenth, just to give you some more preliminary information potentially, but we are still working forward to that. We say that May fifth deadline because NCHFA final deadline for tax credit applications is the Friday after the fifth, so we need to get those conditional awards to the tax credit developers prior to the final application deadline.
Very good, aggressive. Any questions, Samuel? Councilmember?
Thank you very much. Of the twenty-seven proposals that were deemed eligible, how many of those are Winston-Salem-based?
The developers are Winston-Salem-based?
Well, you mentioned that some of the people were coming from out of the state or out of the time zone at least. How many of those proposals, developers, whoever they are, were located here in Winston-Salem?
Yes, so four, four of the developers are Winston-Salem-based. So when I say Winston-Salem-based, they own and operate their businesses here in Winston-Salem.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Appreciate it very much. We do, Councilmember Siffio, if you have a need for a brief closed session, and I'll recognize Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven a one, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential and not considered a matter of public record pursuant to General Statute one sixty-eight dash one sixty-eight and pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven a four, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor of going into closed session pursuant to the statutes that Councilmember Taylor referenced? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we'll go into closed session.
He used to do that to me all the time.
Glad to have you.
I'm always in there talking.
Is there a motion to end closed session?
So, so what, good?
Motion by Councilmember Holland, Secretary of State, Councilmember Siffio. All in favor of ending closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So mo, second.
Motion by Councilmember Siffio, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, we're adjourned.